Turn the mic on. Good evening, I want to welcome everyone to the Caroline County Planning Commission. This is called a community meeting, it's really boiling down to be a work session. And I'm glad to see so many people in attendance. We really need public input and we need to hear your opinions and your feelings. That being said, I would like to make the introductions. To my far left is Mr. J.D. Young and Vice Chair. And he is representing Reedy Church. To my left is Dr. Carol Horton, representing Port Royal. To my immediate right is Mr. Purcell Minor, representing Mattapanah. To his right is Mr. George Weaver of Madison. And on the far right is Mr. Richard Williams of Western Carolina. We have tonight Mr. Leon Hughes, who's our Director of Planning and Community Development. Mr. Craig Pennington, our County Planner. Mr. Chris McKenzie, our County Attorney. And we have Ms. Priscilla Voight, who is our IT Specialist, keeping us, I guess, well, we're not on the air, but keeping our sound and recordings going. I am Bob Schwartz of the Bowling Green District. And with that, as stated, we have had this matter before us, once before. And it being desire us to have further input from the citizens. We are going to have and obtain hopefully new information. We are going to have input in the manner of a work session. With that, I'll ask Mr. Hughes if he would like to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm not gonna make a presentation, but I just think for the citizens who may be here for the first time, just want to give a brief recap of proceedings in the past. So as you know, this matter was sent back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration by the Board. The Planning Commission has had a work session. In that work session, we talked about the comprehensive plan and the goals identified in the plan. The Carmel Church Growth Area policies and strategies for growth. And we looked at potential expansions of the PERT area up by MCDen. And then also a future comp plan amendment coming by another applicant, Luck Development. And then we touched on the proposed expansion of the PERT along Jericho Road, or Growth Area along Jericho Road. And so tonight, just for clarification, the area that is being discussed is the area in red on the map. It is a reconsidered or smaller area than the original PERT that was presented. When this matter came before you, that you denied, the areas that are in the dark royal blue were also a part of the PERT area. And that total area at the time was 2,896 acres and included 124 parcels. The proposed area in the red is 1,161 acres and 31 parcels. So it is smaller than what was originally proposed. And so, just for the public's awareness, I just give that brief recap tonight. And I have to answer any questions if you have any at this time.
Alright, thank you, sir. Commissioners, you have any questions?
So tonight, we're only discussing the area in red?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what you said, Mr. Hughes? And our next meeting will involve the area in red only?
I think the Commission, at the conclusion of tonight, will have to make a decision on what the next meeting will involve.
Okay, alright.
I can touch on that, the procedural legal aspects of this too. Just to add a little bit more, when we were at the work session last time, as Mr. Hughes was pointing out, you covered a couple different things. And when we got to this remaining PERT area, we were just running a little short on time because you had your, it was in advance of your regular meeting. And you were getting to a point where you were indicating that you wanted to hear from the prospective development community in that area and also the public in that area, and we just didn't have time for that. Which is what brings us to tonight. And so, the purpose of tonight is basically an extension of your work session from last time. It's a new one, but you needed more time, so this is your opportunity to have more time to hear comment from whomever you want to hear comment from, whatever information you feel is relevant and necessary in order for you to decide whether you want to advance this amendment to the comp plan as revised with respect to this Jericho Road area. Whether you want to instruct staff to put that on your next agenda for a public hearing. And if you make that decision, then that public hearing will be a normal public hearing like any other comp plan amendment. And there'll be, you know, a presentation from staff on it, there'll be, you know, three minutes for the public to speak. And then you'll make a vote and a recommendation to the Board. But this is one step before that. And what we're doing here tonight is, we're in this unusual posture where this has gone up to the Board. You've looked at this in a similar format. And it's gone up to the Board, and the Board sent it back down to you to say, this got revised a bit while it was before us. We want you to reconsider and see if there's any additional recommendations you want to make to the Board on the comp plan. So that's what we're doing tonight. Whenever you feel like you've gotten the information, you need to make that decision. You know, you can conclude the work session. But I think it's important for the public to know that before any recommendation comes out of this body as to whether you want approval or denial of this proposed amendment, there will be a public hearing that will be advertised in the newspaper and run through our normal public hearing process.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we are only focusing on the Jericho Road extension. We will not be discussing any singular or specific project that is proposed. So please, keep that in mind as you make your comments. And ask, if you have any questions, that can be answered by legal or maybe even the applicant. Please feel free to ask questions, that's how we gain information. But just remember, we are focused only on the Jericho Road extension. With that, is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this matter? If so, please come forward, state your name and your voting district, please. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? And I will be happy to do the introduction, this is Mrs. Ann Neils Cosby, she is the attorney representing someone. And any comments you wish to make on the Jericho Road extension?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. My name is Annie O'Cosby and I am an attorney with Green Hill Locker. And I'm here representing Valco Caroline County LLC, which is the, would be the primary developer should this PERT be approved. But because we do have an interest in this project, and actually we're the project that sort of got this ball rolling. I was hoping to address the Planning Commission and give information, and I'm glad as well that the public is here. Because I, you know, would be, because I'd like to sort of explain how we got here. And, you know, what, you know, why we think that this is appropriate for the, for a PERT area. I know this is really just, it's a work session, it's not a public hearing. But I thought it might be helpful with my comments, I do have just a handout that I thought would be helpful to the Planning Commission just to sort of go along, because I know listening to a lawyer talk is really quite boring sometimes. So if that's okay, I'll give this to Mr. Pennington. And then, I'm just gonna refer to them again, I understand that I'm, I am here as a public participant. But before I get started, I would like to introduce, on behalf of Caroline, Valco Caroline County LLC and Tract, its owning entity, Jessica Bennett is with us as well, and Brandon Smith. So if you do have questions as you go forward, you know, they're here on behalf of the developer applicant and would be happy to answer any questions that you have. And I also had sent a letter, again, to the Planning Commission, just in an effort to try to get this information to you. And I'll try not to be duplicative and take too much time. But sort of to revisit sort of how we got here and why you're being asked to look at this proposal again. This started back in October of 2022, when Valco approached the county about a proposed data center technology park as an economic development project in this area. And at the time, you know, the PERT, the Planned Innovation Research Technology District wasn't a thing. You know, but as part of the proposed development of this project, they were advised that a comprehensive plan amendment would be required. And so, they said, okay, you know, let's move forward with that. At the time, planning staff looked at this area with an eye towards economic development and the comprehensive plan and said, you know, in addition to their proposed land, maybe it makes sense to have a much greater area. So staff actually created the boundaries of this Western District PERT area. It included our project, which was our primary focus for the county, but it included much more acreage than that. So that's what went forward. So the original language of the PERT, you know, what a PERT would look like, you know, that went forward with the original land use map amendment that the Planning Commission reviewed. And I think, you know, that was the first, the first PERT that y'all considered. It was the, you know, the first introduction to this whole, you know, type of use. So the, the language at the time, that was included in the staff report, which I included in my letter to you, was really that the PERT would be appropriate where there were suitable lands, tracts of land for technology uses, where there were large tracts of land in close proximity to public utilities, within or approximately close to a growth area, and where the actual site could be developed under appropriate circumstances. So with those four criteria, those were the criteria of the PERT district. And then the land use map, as you may recall, was attached or came forward with the actual PERT language. So the, the original development included over 2,800 acres. And that's on page three of that handout, you know, just to remind you, that was the original PERT that came before the Planning Commission. And I think at the time, and that included the land over to the east, the MCDen property and future PERT areas, as well as, you know, the very large Western Mount Aerie sort of PERT area. And I remember at the time, you know, with regard to the Western District, you know, the Planning Commissioner said, you know, this is just too much for this area. You know, this is, you know, we're concerned about that. So as you may recall, the PERT itself was approved, you know, that that would be a part of the Carmel Church Growth Area. Under certain circumstances, those four circumstances. You approved the MCDen section, but then said, we do not recommend to the Board the approval of this Western District as it was proposed. That went up to the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors agreed with the Planning Commission in all of those respects, adopted the PERT growth area as part of the comp plan. And then adopted the, the Eastern PERT, but then said, you know, we're not gonna agree to the Western PERT.
If I may interrupt you for just a moment, please, and I don't like to interrupt people. What I'm hearing, and I may be wrong, but it sounds to me as if you're pleading your case for Valco. And I'm not certain that that is an area that we're going to go in tonight. So I appreciate what you're saying, but it may be if we decide to go to public hearing, what you're coming with may be best served at that meeting. Because here again, we're not going to be proposal specific.
Of course.
Yeah. I don't know if that's what the other commissioners are getting or not, but
Of course.
We just want some generalities.
Yes.
It sounds to me like you're going specifically to what you're supposed to be doing, it's going for your client.
Yes, no, and I understand and I apologize, that's not my intent. I understand this is about the Western PERT. I think I, my intent was to revisit how we got here for the Planning Commission. Because it is the case that the PERT area was, you know, this whole process for this, for this area was initiated because of this application. I am not, and this use, I'm not talking about our particular use, but the area, I do think the, the question is, and for this commission, is this area, which includes this property, appropriate for a PERT? And I think that's exactly what's before you, that's where the Board sent this back to you. They reconsidered their vote and said, well, we don't want this big of an area, we want to do something smaller. And so, they considered two maps that Mr. Hughes has discussed that were smaller. And then they said, you know what, we don't know, we want to send that back to the commission. So my intent here is not on my application, but to, to explain why we think this area, which does include our land, but whether you approve ultimately the zoning for this applicant or not. We do believe that this area is appropriate for the PERT, because again, going back to those criteria. And by this area, I mean a much smaller area. And I know Mr. Hughes has this map up behind you in red. The Board would allow you to do a smaller area. So that's sort of another, you know, consideration, that you could say, well, maybe it's this area in red, or maybe it's even smaller than that.
Okay.
And so that's where, I'm just saying, if you did that area, going back to those criteria again, if it's a large tract of land, if it's close to utilities, if it's near the growth area and is suitable for development, then those are the standards for you to consider in deciding whether or not any of this land would be appropriate for the Western PERT. And so I would suggest to you, the, and then I'll, and then I'll sit down, if that's okay. Just the, this area is, obviously it's a large tract of land. A 500 KV line runs through this property, again, whether it's our development or anything else. The PERT criteria is, is it close to utilities? Yes, there's a 500 KV line that makes it perfect for this type of use. Utilities would also be extended. Is it close to the growth area? The boundary from that Western District is less than a mile, roughly. And again, when you get to the zoning case, whenever it comes up, then you can look at, can this be developed in a suitable way? So for those reasons, you know, we think that's what the commission, in looking at, you know, this property, you know, you know, should be considering, those criteria. And if it is, meets those criteria, it would be appropriate. So again, all are part of that land. And we've proposed just an 864 acre, but for those reasons. And again, they're in the letter and we're happy to answer any questions about the proposed use or, you know, its impacts, you know, related to the, to the surrounding area. But we do think it meets those criteria, that land, not just our, our application.
So, Mr. Chair, since it's a work session, can I clarify where the 864 acres suggestion is? It's
At this juncture, I think that was a semi-pleading on behalf of our client. And I, I think it would be more appropriate to ask questions if we get to the point, which we probably will, of having a full public hearing. I, I think unless it's our option to get information.
Yeah, I definitely need to know where that suggestion, 860, because we've changed this so much. You know, okay, Mr. Hughes said he could probably address that.
And it's on page six here, in what I handed out, just for reference.
So the 860 acres is essentially what the applicant's application contained?
But where's 864? Or just that page?
Dr. Horton, so if you look on page six of our handout?
Page six?
Of this hand, yeah.
No, 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 no.
Just hand it out.
This, this, yeah, page six there. Look down the bottom, to the right.
Okay.
This one right here. So that 860 acres is essentially the area that, of their rezoning application. And just for clarification, the Planning Commission did hear that rezoning application previously.
Yeah, yeah, we did. I've just Okay, I think the Chair showed me where it is. So we, you know, we have like several maps here, but I can clarify it later if we, if we get a break or after the meeting. But yeah, I need to know exactly where that is.
Well, it's, it's there, it's in the middle of
On the left-hand side of that big map, correct?
Yeah, in the red area. It's essentially, it eliminates the Who's had the pointer? Oh, he does.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Yes.
Alright, that's 864 acres, that whole thing that's outlined, okay?
No, the whole thing that's outlined is a thousand acres.
That's the original thousand something we
The original, the original thousand, the original 2,800 acres was the red area plus the area in royal blue. Their 860 acres, which is on page six, is only a portion of that red area. That red area is 1,161 acres.
Yeah.
Or 661, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, alright, I just wanted to make sure, clarify. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes? I'm, I'm going to use, yes, it's the one that is on the Board. Should the area that is marked with the hash marks, that being Mr. Thompson's property, as well as property owned by the Keys and the Smiths. If that area were to be designated a PERT and be allowed for PERT usage, then the areas that are presently marked in the blue could later be added into a PERT or application be made for. If the Thompson property, the Keys property, and the Smiths property be designated as PERT, would not that give a foothold to allowing the remaining area in the blue to be brought back again at a later date?
Yeah, what it would do is you'd essentially be creating a doorknob hole, a doorknob hole, yeah. So you could, someone could come back and ask for that.
Yes. And as I understand it, the, Mrs. Neils Cosby and her client recommended the reduced area, in other words, excluding that in the dark blue initially, is that correct?
Yeah, what they recommended was that the PERT area include just the parcels that they were considering for rezoning.
Okay.
And, you know, staff is not comfortable with creating a growth area around a single set of parcels owned by a single entity with a development proposal on the table. I mean, it's essentially the definition of spot zone. And so, that's why we included, that's why when
Excuse me, just a moment. Ladies and gentlemen, I've made it abundantly clear in the past that any disruption to this meeting, you will be asked to leave. Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Hughes, please proceed.
So that's why we added the additional parcels. The Keys family did reach out and ask that their parcels be included. Mr. Smith reached out and said that at this point, he was non-committal on the PERT area and was gonna reserve judgment. He didn't have a, you know, feeling one way or the other at the time, but he wanted to be clear that he was, he was non-committal. And so, you know, and the inclusion of additional parcels into the PERT area does not change their zoning. And so, does not render their land uses, you know, non-conforming or anything like that. It just identifies an area, the county is saying that at some point or now, with the amendment, is appropriate for this type of development.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, just trying to gather the vehicle.
Mr. Chairman, my question would be, the areas that are in blue, they don't seem to be large tracts of land there. So would that negate, or would that offset what we're looking at as far as their, that versus the larger tracts of land that could be in the PERT area? Because if you have smaller tracts, that would be more difficult to become part of the growth area?
My opinion, and we all know what an opinion is worth.
Absolutely.
Is that once a foothold is gained, how would the Board of Supervisors make the ultimate decision to disprove, or disapprove additional land area? And the answer, as far as I can see, is that they will not be able to do that. If we were to approve ultimately, or recommend approval, and the Board of Supervisors were to recommend and give approval to, let's say, a 10-acre piece of land and designate it as a PERT area, I don't think that legally an additional land owner who wanted to be included in a PERT, say 30 days down the road, or whatever time period, I don't think you are gonna be able to legally deny that. And I'm going back a couple of years to what we all went through with the solar industry. And I have an opinion on how I'm leaning in my vote when we get to that stage, but I'm not gonna air that at this point. I think it's pertinent that we get all the information and input from the citizens as well as their and we make a decision collectively as a commission.
Mr. Chair, I just, I heard a couple mentions of legal concerns, I wanted to pop up and just highlight, no corrections or anything, I think this is the exact discussion that this work session is intended to host. But I just wanted to clarify, if nothing else to the record, that, you know, this is the comp plan consideration. And that if, you know, if someone wanted their property to be able to be used for a PERT use, and they would need, generally need first to be in the PERT comp plan. But then, you know, as you recall, there's a second level, right? Then you need to actually rezone the property to the PERT district. And so, you know, extending the comp, the PERT comp plan area certainly clears the way to that rezoning generally. But it is not itself the rezoning. So I just wanted to clarify that legally, there is that Um, but it is not itself the rezoning, so I just wanted to clarify that legally there is that second step. Um, and they, for better or worse, they're both called perk, so it's comp plan perk and then zoning district perk.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Please. Because we changed this one area to a blue color and we say we're removing it from, from the perk area, that means at any time they could change it back to orange, make it perk again, I just think, just by taking this out and saying, we're removing this area from the perk, I doesn't, I don't think it stops any of the growth from happening because it could be changed at any particular time, just my opinion.
If it is included in the, uh, ex- extension of the Carmel Church growth area, if it is not included in the Carmel Church growth area, uh, then it can't be considered for that, sir. Because changing the comp plan or the growth area is step one. And that has been a stumbling block so far for people that are interested in that property. And they've got to get beyond us and beyond the board first before that can even occur.
It is a question of adjusting the growth area from, from Carmel Church, and I think that that's gonna be a big hassle to go forward, and I just think that we've looked at this quite a few times already, and I just think that it's in the same position it was before, and I feel exactly the same way as I felt, and I've said.
All right, thank you, sir.
And just to clarify, the, the blue to the left right now is zone for ten-acre housing lots, correct? Okay, still ten-acre lots right there for houses, so.
Commissioners, anything further? We'll move on to the next speaker.
Good evening, um, my name's Karen Collins, I live in the Reedy Church District. And I've read this before to the board of supervisors, um, they really didn't apparently seem to care, but, uh, this is not my opinion, this is actually from the Caroline County Comprehensive Plan. It states that it's the single most important document available to the county in making land use decisions. It goes on to say that consistently following the comp plan, it, the board removes the potential of discrimination against individual landowners and eliminates any claims of any arbitrary and capricious actions. And goes on to say that adherence to it allows property owners to make investment decisions in a stable atmosphere. This in turn maximizes the owner's return consistent with the public goal set forth by the board supervisors, and so that residents and businesses can anticipate which actions will be supported by the board. This comprehensive plan, from everything that I can see, and I've been here since nineteen eighty, so I've seen a lot in this county, but this comprehensive plan that, it involved not only a lot of county input from employees and stakeholders, but it involved a huge amount of citizen input, and therefore we also have all of these, uh, appendices that are specific plans, Carmel Church Plan and Lady Smith Plan, again, which had substantial amounts of citizen input. Lots of thought went into it. It is infuriating as a native of Caroline that we are going to upend an entire comprehensive plan that had that much thought put into it and the community involvement for basically one developer. There is a ton of undeveloped land in the current growth area that is suitable. We've heard it before at other meetings, it's, there is, there are other tracts of land suitable for what this client wants to do out here and why they're pushing it so hard. So why, again, would we upend a comprehensive plan and everything that it stands for, for one person or one developer? The only people that I've heard or seen letters of support from are people who will profit from this change. The majority of us who live there, and, and I'll say, we are part of this, we lived in a growth area. I lived for twelve years in Lady Smith Growth Area, I didn't want to be there anymore. So when I chose to make an investment, a long-term investment, I looked at where I could go in the county where I didn't have to worry about that. And then low and behold, two years after I make my investment, and I know that there are other people in this room that did the same thing, we're being told, oh, guess what, now you're gonna be right beside all this development. And I don't think that's fair to the community to do that to them when it specifically says in the Carmel Church Plan that that area will be maintained and preserved, that no, that nothing will be developed along the North Anna River, I mean, this is not, not my opinion, this is what's in the plan. So you're, it's a slap in the face to the people who actually live here, that somebody who owns property who doesn't even live here is essentially, again, gonna upend and affect all of us for their benefit. The county did very little to notify anybody, they admitted that last year, they said they put it in, in a newspaper, the bare minimum, a newspaper, uh, ad, which, in an obsolete newspaper, and they put one little sign up right out at the property, basically in a dead end, so there, nobody's gonna see it. Hardly no one on Jericho or Mount Airy or Tate or Hewlett, none of us that are gonna be impacted, hardly any of us even knew about this. I was still talking to people in November at the polls who had no clue that this was happening. And they're getting mixed information from the county about all of this, oh, well, it's gonna provide better internet and it's gonna provide public utilities and all of this, but without telling all of the negative parts of it. And it's, again, it's just, I'm just sad that we're even here talking about this again. There is plenty of available land, plenty of opportunity within the growth area. We shouldn't even be talking about expanding growth areas until we are at or near capacity of developing what we've already uh, deemed to be growth areas, I, I'm, I'm just, it's disheartening that we're here again. And because, again, I have not talked to anyone, again, except for I've heard of the people that are gonna profit from this in that area. And if you guys are supposed to be representative of the community and the people, then listen to what we're saying, we don't want it over there. And, and listen to what this says, this is not my opinion, this is a plan, this is your plan, it's the county's plan, it says you're not gonna develop over there. So please, don't develop the western area over on Jericho, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollins.
Good evening, Kate McFadden, Mattapanai District, um, I wanted to go through a couple of questions I had with how this aligns with the comprehensive plan. Um, but I find this map very misleading, we're talking about eight hundred and sixty-some acres, yet up there we're showing a map and in all the county documents we're showing a map that's a thousand something acres running right up to Jericho Road. Um, I believe that the version two map, and it's kind of be submitted in her letter to you all, which I also included in my letter to you, includes the eight hundred and some areas she's talking about. I have a copy of it here, I don't have an electronic copy, but if I'm correct, um, I know I can't ask her, but if I'm correct, I believe it's this little red over here. Um, it is basically the bottom portion of that. So I think for the purposes of this meeting and informing residents, if that is the true eight hundred and sixty-some acres, why are we looking at this now? Um, and she did state in her letter, which I included attached to mine, um, that that one there preferred. Again, I think it would be helpful to everyone here tonight if we could have this map, I have a copy if you need it, um, but it shows that area is even further away and that is. Would you like me to go through the comprehensive plan questions, or can we address that map and maybe get a more accurate picture up there of what we're looking at?
Ma'am, it's your turn.
Got it.
You got a few minutes left.
Got it, um, so specifically in regards to our comprehensive plan.
Ms. McFadden, would, would you speak into the mic, please, thank you.
Specifically in regards to our comprehensive plan, our vision statement states that Caroline County will become a model planned residential and business development um, that ensures sufficient managed economic growth to enhance the quality of life of its residents, attract desired socially responsible new businesses, and ensure fiscally sound county government that is responsible to the needs of its residents and businesses while maintaining tax rates at a reasonable level and preserving the desired rural characteristics of the county. Um, can anyone in the county clarify how this is aligned with that, specifically enhancing our quality of life, um, being responsive to our needs, maintaining our tax rates, or preserving the desired rural characteristics of our county? Um, in regards to growth management, it talks a lot, again, about the rural cha- uh, our rural character and states the preservation of agricultural lands, open space, and rural character has always been identified as an important goal of previous comprehensive plans, and the protection of rural areas is an important goal of, um, excuse me, and the protection of rural areas is a primary consideration, again, how is that aligned with that?
All right, Ms. McFadden, I, I'm not trying to cut you short, but all of that is in writing, and believe me, we are familiar with it, so you.
Okay, so, um, if you have read it, then you have the more detailed version, so I will summarize the specifics, um. So I think you've got most of that, um, I guess my, uh, last one would be specifically we state with the North Anna River, um, that we should preserve scenic views of the North Anna River, um, in historical and archaeological sites, um, and specifically states, uh, no residential, commercial, or industrial zoning uses that border the North Anna River should be proposed.
All right, thank you, Ms. McFadden. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and distinguished commissioners.
Good evening, Mr. Lit Thompson, thank you, good evening.
Thank you, uh, my name is Lit Thompson, I am the landowner of Mount Airy Farm. The eight hundred and fifty-five acres that is being discussed for potential comprehensive plan change. I am in favor of this comprehensive plan change for many reasons, but before I get into that, please allow me to give you a little history on how all this came about. About eighteen months ago, I received a call from the county telling me that there was a group looking for a large tract of land with power lines running through the middle of it, and asked me if I would consider talking to them. I told the county that I would meet with this group and see what their plans were, and I eventually ended up showing them the site. To make a long story short, as I got to know this group and their plans and learned more and more about data centers, I became convinced that this low-impact use would be the highest and best use not only for this farm, but more importantly for the county as a whole. Over the years, I've had at least a dozen solar companies approach me. I've also had a quarry company tell me that this site has over two hundred million tons of high-grade granite in the ground, and this site would make a great quarry. We've also had the Department of Defense visit this site for a possible federal project of some sort. And in, in addition to all of this, we've had a national home builder look at the site since we can by right build at least eighty-five homes or potentially more utilizing the county's family division ordinance. None of these above use has come close to the benefits of a low-impact, high-tax-paying generator like a data center project. A department of defense project would not pay taxes and help our schools, and we for sure do not want a quarry anywhere in the area creating decades of truck traffic adding to the already congested area. As I gain more knowledge of the benefits of data centers, I now know why Henrico, Hanover, Louisa, and many other counties all through Virginia are chasing these high-tax-paying, low-impact data centers to their counties. As a matter of fact, this same buyer group has just received a unanimous recommendation from the Hanover County Planning Commission for approval of a center, of a similar data center park. I know this group worked very hard to partner with Hanover County to tailor their application to address their community concerns, and also know they are eager to do the same in this county. I've now worked with this buyer group for over eighteen months, and I can tell you, they are a partnership group anyone would covet. As a matter of fact, they have already spent well over one million dollars on our land in engineering, soil samples, wetlands delineation, and are willing to spend fifteen million dollars at their own cost to extend water, sewer, utilities to the site at no downside risk to the county, only upside benefits for years to come. Since I've met this group, I've visited data centers inside and out, there's nothing to them. They're square buildings tucked away in private and secure places with buffers, and then they're just full of computers. There's little to nothing to not like about them. The reason I think the comprehensive plan should be changed for Mount Airy is that this would pave the way for a great economic development project that is estimated to bring in over fifty million dollars of tax revenue with low impact, utilizing less than fifteen percent of the eight hundred and fifty-five acres. With a total county budget of a hundred and thirty-five million, fifty million dollars would be a game changer for our schools, our children, our emergency services, and at the same time, it would help keep the taxes low for our citizens. Please know that I do love farms, and I also love the rural nature of Caroline County. But to put it in perspective, Caroline County has over three hundred and fifty-one thousand acres of land, of which over two hundred and sixty-one thousand acres is in commercial forest land, over sixty-one thousand acres is in farmland, over seventy-seven thousand acres of land is Fort A.P. Hill. And as I understand it, the county does not receive much tax revenue from a government use like this. So eight fif- eight hundred and fifty-five acres represents point two four percent of the county, and yet a use like this would generate over one-third of the entire county budget that could be used for good. If only fifteen percent of the eight hundred and fifty-five acres is being impacted as this group is proposing, this would be an impact of a hundred and twenty-eight acres, which now represents a little over point oh three percent of the county on a very private tract of land tucked away in the woods with huge transmission lines running through the middle of it. So in considering your decision, please think about point oh three percent or a hundred and twenty-eight acres of buffered hidden land against the three hundred and fifty-one thousand acres of land in this county for the benefit of over fifty million dollars per year. Seems like a project like this is common sense growth. Also, to put it in perspective, I think one person said it so eloquently at a recent board of supervisors meeting, it would take fifteen one-point-two-million-square-foot distribution centers that was like, like the one that was just built to result in the same tax revenue for the county that this one project is projected to create. And data centers do not bring along with them ten thousand trucks that fifteen distribution centers would generate. So the question is, does the county want to be known for truck stops and distribution centers or a county thriving and known for technology and innovation flushed with cash that could be spent on the best schools, the best teachers, and the best county employees and volunteers for all of our emergency services and county amenities? I believe selectively carving out a few sites in Caroline County that are already ruined by ugly transmission lines is common sense growth. While there's no such thing as a perfect project, growth is inevitable, especially for a county position like Caroline County. Even if you vote no on my request, I take my hat off to the leaders of Caroline County for approving the Mattabee Project at Thornburg. I know these decisions must be hard, and doing the right thing takes guts and backbone, and I thank you for that. I do want to see Caroline County stay beautiful and rural, and I believe this can be accomplished by allowing a few select data center campuses in the right hidden areas of the county. It seems a bit counterintuitive, but allowing a few strategically placed data centers in and around existing power lines is the way to keep this county rural, beautiful, in addition to making this county a better place to live. With all due respect to the potential opposition, I would only ask you to consider weighing the pros and cons with an open mind objectively. Our children are the most important resource we have. Please say yes for the sake of our four thousand two hundred and thirty-eight precious children in Caroline County who would be positively impacted by a low-impact cash-generating project like this, such as a data center. Say yes to the two hundred and twenty-one teachers and over two hundred and fifty volunteers.
Mr. Thompson, we've got to wrap it up.
Okay, and, and, uh, and please say yes to the ninety-nine percent of the thirty thousand citizens in this county who would be positively impacted by a project like this. Um, and I'd also like to argue that the Mount Airy site is much more private than Mattabee Project that was just approved. And, uh, Mount Airy is only three miles from the growth area, not eight-plus miles like Matta- Mattabee. And, uh, so we've just got a couple more points. Yeah, data centers follow po- power lines when they can and for good reasons. Placing data sen- and this really speaks to. reasons. Placing data cen, and this really speaks to the reason that they picked this site. Um, uh, placing data centers in and around transmission lines eliminates the need for power companies to purchase easements through private property extending more power lines through the county. This is not good for the neighbors or the county, and this is a good reason these data centers need to be contained along these big transmission lines. My family and I have always hated these massive transmission lines cutting through the middle of our land. I can assure you, I would not be standing here tonight making this request if that was not so. So we're trying to make the, the best of a situation. So in conclusion, envision a county with parks, ballfields, and great amenities, and over-the-top great schools, and yes, a county that continues to support limited growth but common sense growth. Yes, leave the beautiful farms and rural nature of this amazing county, but this can only be achieved by choosing a few common sense areas for a few data center campuses. Thank you for all the hard decisions that you make in order to make this county a better place to live.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to remind you, this is not about data centers. We are not anti-data center. This is about the extension of the Jericho Road growth area. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Kevin Collins, Reedy Church District. Uh, thank you for hosting this, uh, community meeting. Um, I, I like that the last speaker spoke of we have to do better for the children. Um, I've got ten-year-old twins at home, um, and that is a big reason why I'm here tonight. Um, and one thing that they're learning in school is reading comprehension, and I think we might benefit from that lesson. Uh, this meeting was intended to be, uh, planning commissioners and county staff present to answer questions and hear citizen input, not a sales pitch. So I have some very specific questions I'd like to ask you guys tonight and county staff if they could answer them for me.
Yes, sir.
Before I get into that, I'd like about thirty seconds to just remind everybody, this same landowner owns the majority of the land you see south of the central red zone on ninety-five interchange there in Carmel Church. It's eleven hundred acres for a smart city with ten thousand homes he envisions and a train station. Um, so when he's talking about how he wants to save rural county, um, that's the, the overall goal there in Carmel Church Station. Um, so my question is, uh, the first one was answered that the county actually approached this landowner with this project. Um, my second is, uh, how does this proposal align with goal three-point-five of the Carmel Church Plan? Uh, preserve scenic views, the North Anna River, and historical and archaeological sites.
That's a question for staff.
No, this, this was supposed to be a question-and-answer-type town hall meeting. The public meeting notification clearly says planning commissioners and county staff will be present to answer questions and hear citizen input on the proposed expansion of the Carmel growth area. This was never intended to be a work session according to this announcement, and I feel slighted that I prepared a list of questions that will not be answered tonight. Okay, so you, so you want me to ask all the questions, and then... I would like, I'd like an answer to my first question. Does this comprehensive plan extension align with that?
Maybe, maybe not. We'd have to look into it.
All right. Um, how does this proposed comp plan amendment align with goal three-point-six? Preserve open space in appropriate rural residential subdivisions to protect adjacent agricultural forests and environmental sensitive lands and the rural character of the areas to be maintained for rural agricultural land uses. Uh, we are, also have preserving the rural character of Carmel Church community. Um, this one jumped out to me here where it discusses that, uh, the planning commission and board of supervisors are to meet to review the comprehensive plan in detail. Uh, the comprehensive plan is not designed to be taken off the shelf every five years, revised, and placed back on the shelf. The plan is a guide for everyday land uses as a means of more consistently reviewing the plan. Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission should periodically meet. When was the last time you guys had a meeting to review the comprehensive plan in depth of the Board of Supervisors?
I think that was done three years ago.
Okay. in not following the land use, areas designated for plan development are located sole, oh, I'm sorry. Why is the county not following the guidance of the land use in the comprehensive plan? Areas designated for plan development are located solely within designated growth areas. The county prefers this approach because it can better address the wide range of planning issues comprehensively instead of a piecemeal approach that typically, that typical rezoning applications create. Um-
Was that your question, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I think I can answer that because the plan is a plan. Uh, it is not etched in stone. Uh, it is subject to revision, so when it is feasible, logical, and in the best interest of the county, the plan can be amended.
As it was, I think that was, you guys amended it, uh, September of last year? I think was the, the addition of the western, or I'm sorry, the eastern PERT was either August or September, or was that the June meeting?
I don't recall specifically.
Okay, well, that was the, that was the PERT to the eastern side that we, we've already agreed was a, a location for data center growth. I believe that area was how many acres?
Yeah, I believe you are correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, so we've already designated that PERT area. Does county staff have a, a, an estimate or an number on that acreage right off the bat that you could look up? Just to prove the point that we've already rezoned or, or designated fifteen hundred roughly in that eastern section.
I, I believe that there are two areas that have been designated as, uh, susceptible to PERT-
Okay.
Uh, by being put into an M-one zoning.
Okay.
So I think you are correct on that.
Um, so what is the rush to revisit this? Are we doing this simply because-
There's no rush.
Okay.
That, that's why, uh, this panel by a six-to-zero vote made a recommendation of denial to the Board of Supervisors.
Five-zero, one abstain.
That's right.
And then it was denied by the Board of Supervisors.
Well, uh, they sent it back to us.
No, it was, it was denied. It was denied four-to-two at the June twelfth meeting. This, this plan died, and then it was reconsidered at the August meeting.
It was revived and sent back to us for further consideration.
Yes, after some private meetings happened between some members of the board and some developers, but that's besides the point. Um, I, I just, again, I'm, I'm kind of taken back that this was a question-and-answer, but we're not really getting a lot of answers. All the answers, all the questions? Yeah, please, please, because, I mean, it says something completely different in the, in the meeting.
Is a deposition or examination of the planning commission. Like, anybody out there, you are collecting the information you need to make the decision that you need to make. You, at the last meeting, said that you wanted to get the proof. That is the purpose of this meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, and, and, do you have an answer to your status at this point, sir?
No.
You don't?
Because of the question answer.
We are, we are here to gain information. We will give information where it's logical and feasible, not to s, further someone's agenda.
Okay. I, I mean, I just, I was hoping we could get some of these questions answered, um, tonight, being that this was question-and-answer, but-
Yes, sir.
I'll respectfully, I guess, submit questions to you guys in the future. Um, in, in finishing, I hope you guys stand behind your original decision and you aren't swayed by outside sources, um, that might influence, uh, or try and influence your decision. You made a sound decision the first time. The Board of Supervisors made a sound decision the first time, and I have full faith that you guys will make a sound decision this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Have a good evening, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, my name is Rebecca Lowry. I'm in the Reedy Church District. I live on Tate Road, right at the end where that blue area makes a point up there. Um, I didn't know any consideration was, um, being thought of for this land until I saw signs on Jericho Road right around the election last year. Um, I didn't know that the county advertised it in the newspaper. I don't know who gets newspapers anymore. Um, all of mine are digital. I didn't see anything about it, so I'm thankful for whatever citizens posted signs, uh, last year. Um, the land that is right behind my house was timbered about five years ago, five or six years ago. It is, you know, a timber-owned tract of land. Um, surveyor came to our property to ask if he could park on our land so he could get in and survey the area before the timber was sold. And he told us that it's a wetlands area and would be protected. You know, the, the area around the wetlands wouldn't be, the wood wouldn't be cut, it wouldn't be timbered there. There's also a cemetery back there, which I haven't seen on any county maps, but I did see it then because after the land was timbered, we walked the land, you know, all the trees were down. It's the Tate Family Cemetery. It's actually two. There's like a black and a white part. Um, so there is a cemetery back there that's supposed to be preserved and allow access to family members. There's also Civil War trenches back there. Um, it's a beautiful area. Um, I've been on Tate Road for nineteen years now. I love the rural character there. Uh, I would hate to see that turned into a PERT area. I'm afraid if you make the red area a PERT, that the blue will follow right behind that. And it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, but it's my understanding that that wouldn't mean just data centers, and I'm not against data centers at all. I think it could be a great revenue maker if it's done right. Um, but my understanding is, is if that's PERT, it might not just be a data center. It could be factories or, um, you know, manufacturing or other like industrial uses. I lived in Stafford before I moved to Caroline. Um, it was so built up. I couldn't get out of my subdivision. There was so much traffic. You couldn't see the stars at night. There was so much light pollution. And I would hate to see that come to that area there, or, or any of that area. I was at the last meeting you had in January when you talked about, um, following your comprehensive plan as is and not designate, designated that as a PERT area, which I am definitely for. At the last meeting, you had a different map up, and it had like triangles on it that represented population. And it said for Tate Road, I think there were two triangles, and I believe that represented ten people. On Tate Road, there's probably sixty-five of us that live there. Um, I'm probably the only one at the meeting, but others of my neighbors are not for that project. Um, also, at the last meeting, somebody mentioned that the only opposition is outside agitators, and I don't think that's true. I think these are all citizens here that are opposing this. Um, but just, I wanted to just say that we have to be good neighbors to the other counties around us, and we don't own the Rappahannock River or the North Anna River, and, and, you know, we have to be considerate of whatever we do affecting everybody else as well. You know, it's not just about Caroline. Um, I thank you for holding this meeting and taking citizen comments, and I hope that you do preserve that area as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowry. Anyone else?
I'm Mark Atkinson. I'm an urban refugee, currently living in Western Caroline. And I said at an earlier meeting that my wife and I very deliberately chose Caroline County because we were so impressed by the planning that we saw, uh, the comprehensive plan, and how there was an area that was set aside deliberately for growth while still maintaining what made the county unique. And I've been, I've lived in so many areas. I lived in, I lived on Long Island when there were farms on Long Island, and that's how old I am. And I lived, uh, in a, what's now a suburb of Chicago called Palatine, when that too was farm country. And what I've seen again and again and again is that in the name of economic development, the thing that makes an area special, the thing that people love about living in the area and that draws people to that area is inevitably lost. And I'm just scared to death that that's going to happen in Caroline County. It's such a beautiful place. I, my wife and I travel to other countries, and gosh, you know, I think we compare to France and, and countries in Europe, in Europe, where people spend thousands of dollars in tourism. I know we're not here for people like me to ask questions, so I won't put this in a question, but I, I bet that there's still a lot of land that has yet to be developed in the growth area. Is that a, is that generally correct or not correct?
You are absolutely correct.
And part of the reason, I'm guessing, I'm supposing as a citizen, that we're having conversations like this is that people who are coming to Caroline and wanting to do this kind of project look at the growth area and say, ooh, my goodness, that's very expensive. Can we find another place in Caroline County that's not so expensive? So the Board of Supervisors wanting to accommodate say, oh, yes, you can find this area right here, and it's not expensive at all. Well, after that's developed, then the next developer comes in, and they don't want to spend the money for the designated area, and you see where this goes. Over time, more and more and more area is lost instead of preserved. So I hope that's on everybody's mind because I just love this area so much. I love the people. I love the, I love the country roads. One last thing, real quick, a personal thing. My dad passed away in two thousand and five. He had heart disease and three types of cancer, and he was in a lot of pain. And I drove him to the doctor, and we decided we weren't going to take the interstate. We were going to stay on the country roads for as long as we could. And as we drove along, my dad forgot his pain. He was looking out the window, and he kept saying, isn't this pretty? Isn't this lovely? And it's, and every time he'd end with, isn't this just grand? I think it is. Caroline County is just grand, and I hope it stays that way.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Good evening.
Good evening, members. My name's Elizabeth Leonard. Um, I'm actually a Hanover resident and one of the people that Ms. Lowry referred to that are hoping you all will be good neighbors. I've been to several of these meetings and appreciate you all's original, um, decisions and, um, appreciate it, as I said. My family and I own, um, the majority of the land that's in the view shed i, in the bottom of the red and, um, aside from the battlefield down at the other end. But what looks sort of like a dog head and around the corner are all parcels of property that my fourth generation, um- I appreciate you all's continued support in, um, keeping the North Anna wild and free, and, um, as a neighbor, appreciate Caroline's interest in including us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Leonard. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Kyle Hart. I'm representing a national nonprofit called the National Parks Conservation Association. And following Ms. Leonard's comments, I thought it would be appropriate, given that she mentioned the battlefield, to kind of continue beating on that drum a little bit.
Do me a favor, sir.
Yes.
Number one, I need your last name, if you please.
Yes, my last name is Hart, H-A-R-T, Kyle Hart, and I represent a nonprofit.
Item two.
Yes, sir.
I'm old. My ears are slow. Would you please slow down just a little bit?
Yes, sir. I will do my best to slow down a little bit. Thank you. And so, one thing that I wanted to emphasize tonight that as a nonprofit who works to protect national parks, I feel has been missing from this conversation is the fact that there is a large parcel owned by the Park Service directly across the North Anna River from this development. In previous iterations of both this comp plan and, you know, other documents that the county has put out, that has been glossed over at best and honestly ignored, I think. So I would encourage this planning commission at a minimum to consult heavily with the Park Service. And so I'll just share what we consider to be, at the National Parks Conservation Association, best practices before advancing a proposal such as this. So I think at a minimum, as I said, consultation with the Park Service. I would encourage the planning staff and then, you know, de facto, the planning commission to encourage the Park Service to come and present on this application and ask if they have, see if they have any questions or comments. The other thing that I would consider, the applicant to think about is impacts to view sheds. You know, we keep hearing, this is going to be a hidden project, this is going to be a hidden project. I would encourage the planning commission and, once again, the staff, let's see view shed analysis. There are ways that you can study view shed impacts to both battlefield resources in other neighbors. I would encourage, there's a, something out there called a balloon test. I would encourage the applicant at a bare minimum to do a balloon test for the heights that they are intending to build at before moving this application another inch. The other thing that we like to see for data center applications, and so I'll share just, we were tracking an application, a data center application by Microsoft in Prince William County, Virginia. And it was about three quarters of a mile to a mile away from Anassus National Battlefield and was even on the other side of Interstate sixty-six. Microsoft could have never consulted with the Park Service. They could have never even picked up the phone. Microsoft actually proffered, in their proffers, one point two five million dollars for the park. I think that something of that scale at a minimum should be a requirement as we're thinking about this proposal in a, at a bare minimum in the effort of being a good neighbor for the battlefield. The other thing that I would be remiss if I didn't talk about is the water aspect of all of this. As y'all have been aware, data centers use a tremendous amount of water for their operation. And I think before we even consider this plan, I think hammering out what that looks like in the long term for this county and particularly for the North Anna River is very important. There are lots of conversations going on in this county about a water withdrawal permit from the Rappahannock to the tune of almost fourteen million gallons a day. Is this growth area a part of that? Or are we talking more water on top of that? Those are questions that should be answered before this application advances. And then kind of building on that, depending on water use, and I think that's something that the applicant could be required to answer before advancing this application. Hey, how much water are you going to need and where's it going to come from? We should then take even two steps farther and say, what is the impact of that water use? Is it coming out, if it's coming out of the North Anna, is it impacting fish? If it's coming out of the Rappahannock into a different watershed than the Rappahannock, how does that impact the aquatic life in the Rappahannock River? The other thing that I think I was hoping to touch on is tribal consultation. The Rappahannock Tribe has a presence in the area, and they have expressed some concerns organizationally to NPCA about data center development in the region and what it means to their water use, endangered species like the Atlantic sturgeon and the like. So once again, these are just questions that I think should be asked. And then finally, I think the last thing that this planning commission and also, de facto, the county staff should be considering is energy needs. The applicant has sort of repeatedly touched on this evening the existence of the power lines that go through the site. What we have seen in other data center developments across the state is the existence of power lines is used to justify an application, but when the rubber meets the road, what you end up getting is double the power lines, either from a different area. Because the power on those lines, it's for the most part spoken for. Dominion has reiterated time and time again that we are already in a power shortage being driven by data centers. So this idea that we could just somehow magically tap into this existing line, I would like to see that confirmed by the applicant. And so, one thing that we consider to be good policy at a bare minimum is energy needs at full buildout. What is that going to be and where is it coming from? I would like to see before this application or before even this comp plan advances, what is the energy use and how's it getting onto that site? Because I find it personally unlikely that the existing power line is able to support a data center of this magnitude. So with that, I encourage you to seriously dig in on this comp plan, ask these questions of the applicant and the people driving this conversation forward before moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Archer Keys. And I've lived in this area for many years in addition to a lot of metropolitan cities and
What is your voting district, sir?
My name is Archer Keys. I'm in the Reedy Church District.
Reedy Church, thank you.
Yes, sir. My family own four gen, I'm fourth generation of the property we own. My concern, I'm not overly concerned about data centers. I've done a lot of research on data centers since I've been talking about it. I've seen the good, the bad, some of the pros and cons, and have made some decisions in my thinking about it, but I'm not overly concerned about data centers one way or the other. My main concern is the comp plan. I believe that it should have the comp plan amended would be a good thing. Currently, there are limited options that we have with the current comp plan. When I look back over years, I remember when, and it happened a long ago. I wondered whether Carmel Church was good for anything other than truck stops. That's all we had, truck stops. Now when we look and see all the different growth that we have at Carmel Church, my question is, yes, Carmel Church is good. It has proven to be good for something other than trucks, uh, truck stops. So I'm just saying, having the comp plan amended, I think it's a great thing simply because it gives us options. You've got the landowners option, whether it's data centers or whatever, you just have options. To me, options is a good thing. Actions of options, to me, you're nailed to a specific thing that you have to focus on. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Keys, let me ask you this. I understand what you're saying, but you realize this is for an extension west of Jericho Road? Okay.
Yeah, I do. I do. That's, that's exactly my point. The same way we look at what's happening at Carmel Church.
Yes, sir.
Where it used to be nothing but that, uh, truck stops, now we look at it. Beautiful growth. I'm seeing the same thing at, not saying that the west of Carmel Church, Route One would be like, uh, the Carmel Church area, but I'm saying currently, we have bomb lane, land residential. So I'm saying, I believe the amendment to the comp plan has merit. That's what I believe. Well, it's, and not saying if it amended, amended, it have to be and will be struck with some data centers, what seems like everybody is thinking. And it seems that's what I hear and you're saying in a way, but I don't see it have to be that way. I think that having comp plan amended gives landowners options.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Keys.
My name is Philip Tate and I'm from the Reedy Church District. And a couple of people that was up here prior to me, they touched on a couple of things I wanted to say. But, uh, one was, Mr. Thompson owns all that land in a Carmel Church. There's supposed to have been a train station for twenty-plus years now. It's never developed. Maybe that's a good place for the data center instead of over there by my house, which I'm right there in that blue. Right there, I had to, just before you get there, and I don't want my land changed from rural agricultural to industrial. And I grew up in that area. I've lived in that area all my life on Tate Road. And, I mean, Carmel Church is where something like that should be. We already have one that's coming in Caroline, Spotsylvania area. I mean, how many data centers do we need? I mean, that's all rural there. And the previous guy that was up here, he owns land straight across from me. That's right there adjacent to that too. So I mean, I guess that's a lot of the people's, I mean, and then the guy was up here talking about the power and the water. It takes a lot of power and a lot of water to run one of them data centers. And then the road that it's on is a dead-end road, which has got five hundred potholes in it. So something, something's got to be done, but the traffic, the amount of traffic is going to be going in and out of that road and the people that live on that road. And to go back in there to, and then all of the, it's not going to bring that much jobs to Caroline County because all of us will be bid out to whoever gets the lowest bid. And then once the thing is built, you're only going to have a very few amount of people that it takes to run that. I mean, and, and with the transmission lines, just like the guy said, you're going to have to increase that because them, they learn, they use generators and they have a, a great amount of electricity that they need. So I just don't want my land in that blue area right there being industrial. I mean, in the, in the red area right there, that should be right down there in that red area of Carmel Church where all that growth is on the other eleven hundred acres he's got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members. My name is Rory Smith. I live in the Reedy Church District. I had the privilege and opportunity of actually working with the comprehensive plan back some seventeen years ago in its original conception. Just that, it's, it's a plan. And it was no plan for expansion on Jericho Road, period. And I see with this project, you could get water and sewer up Jericho Road and other amenities. You could get road improvements and other things, so, so that the positive aspect of it and not the negative. You know, everything has its negatives and everything has its positives. Nobody's really touched on the positives. Other than Mr. Thompson, Mr. Thompson had a list of positives. But, uh, just that, the plan, look at it. If it needs to be adjusted, adjust it. You know, see, we, we spent like eighteen months at working on this plan. Plan actually won a national award. So, um, just do due diligence, look at the pros and the cons. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Matt Keeley. I live in the Reedy Church District. I've been here for almost fifteen years. And I sympathize with some of my neighbors here. And would just like to remind you, as I'm sure you're aware, you know, I own five acres in a house. And it's probably the biggest investment I'm going to make in my life. I'm a working-class person. Most of the folks in here are too. And our homes are not just an investment of many. It, it is where we raise our family, where we live, and we care deeply about that. And most of us made a decision about coming here to Caroline County and buying where we bought because we wanted to live in that rural area. We wanted that for our families. So we talk about taking a comprehensive plan and I understand it's a plan, it can be adjusted. But you've got to take into consideration your upend in people's lives with what they kind of bought into coming here and made the biggest investment that they're going to make in their life. This isn't just another piece of property to us. And we're going to change that for one development, because that's what it seems to be. And I understand we're talking about a bigger area, but this is being driven by one investment. So I'm opposed to it and I think that needs to be considered. And, and hanging, hanging over our heads so it can bring all this money in, county's not a money-making operation here. I don't, I, I came here, I didn't come here for services. I didn't come here for the schools, and I got school-aged kids and I'm responsible for educating them. I don't need the county to make more money. I want what the county has and why I came here to be preserved. And I, and I know there's a lot of other people that feel that way as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Keeley.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Teets and I am from Hanover County. Born and raised on the North Anna River. Every season, every year, I have enjoyed the beauty of that river. To change the comp plan and to invite industrial business, industrial growth, industrial waste so close to such a beautiful river, a beautiful resource would be awful. Mr. Thompson got up here and said, you know, oh, it's only point two blah, 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 blah acres of land for Hanover County. It's only going to affect that much. But when you think about trees, when you think about wildlife, that isn't just, oh, we're just cutting down it's not just that. There's the ripple effect is, I can't even comprehend it, honestly. We're trying to, I know Caroline and from the sentiments of everyone, people love Caroline County. It is, it is beautiful. I come to the, to the fairgrounds. I go to church in Caroline. I run a homeschool co-op in Caroline. I do a lot of traveling back and forth over the Hanover Caroline line. So to, to just open up such a beautiful plot of land and change it to industrial, to a pert, to satisfy some developers is awful and just, you know, the eight hundred acres is not just eight hundred acres. It's all these people, it's their kids, it's their families, it's their next generation. So when we're talking about eight hundred acres to others, it's their livelihood. So please keep it rolling.
Ms. Keys, are you in Reedy Church District as well?
I'm Mrs. Teets and I'm in
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just going to say your last name.
Mrs. Teets, T-E-E-T-S, and I'm from Hanover. But
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Katie. My name is Katie Bolz. I've lived in Caroline for thirty-five years. I live up there on the North Anna River. I just want to go on record as being against
Expansion, when we have so much area in the growth, in the already areas set aside for this kind of development and growth. I think we should fill up what we've already established as our areas for industrial use before we start expanding it. I'm on that North Anna River probably four or five days every summer kayaking and canoeing. The water level in the summer within the last ten years in many places is less than ankle deep or you got to get out of your canoe to be able to walk. You have to walk to move your canoe while you're up and down the river. So water levels have dropped significantly over the time period that I've been on the river. And I'm very concerned if they start drawing more water out of the river. It's going to have major environmental impacts. And I just want to go on record again as being against this growth.
Thank you, Ms. Bolz. Are you in Hanover?
Western Caroline.
Western Caroline, thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Hello, my name is, uh, John Powell. I'm in the, uh, Reedy Church District.
John?
Powell.
Powell, thank you.
Did not plan on, uh, speaking today. Um, this is only my second meeting this week that I've learned about data centers in the area. Uh, so there have been a lot of good points that have been made here today. And, um, you know, out of the entire population of Caroline County, you know, that particular area right there is probably affecting a very, very small percentage of that entire population. I work in technology. I'm a Cisco engineer. I rely on data centers for my work. Data centers, in, 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 in my opinion, are, are not so bad. My point that I wanna make here is, is that we have a development area here that has been, uh, discussed and, and I heard about the, uh, the great plan from the letter from, uh, um, the other proposed data center. What always bothers me is development always pushes the edges. They always push the boundaries. And this is what's happening over here in, in this area. You're getting, um, people who wanna push that boundary. They wanna put something that's just outside that line. And eh, it's only a mile away from, from the development center or development area. And that's what always happens with development. I grew up in Virginia Beach and we used to have what was called the Green Line between Virginia Beach and Pongo. And, uh, growing up, you know, my family, we always went to, uh, Pongo Strawberry Farms and picked strawberries and it was all very rural and very, uh, all farmland. Today, that's all gone because they've decided to let one business go in and then another, and then another. And now it's no different than Fredericksburg Route Three. So my point here is stop letting businesses push the boundaries. You, you've got a plan. Um, it seems very, very comprehensive. I'm in this area myself because, uh, of, of the rural aspects of, uh, the area. And, uh, there's a right place in the right time for, uh, for different businesses and, and different, um, uh, types of industries and, 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 and commercial. That's what I wanted to convey to you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Hello, my name is Michael Rawls. I, uh, found out tonight that I'm in Reedy Church. And I, I say that because, um, we actually moved here after it was too late to register for the most recent elections in November. So we're very new people to this area. Uh, and I can certainly assure you, we thought that, uh, we were building in a place that was outside of an economic development zone. And, uh, I also, before I go any further, wanna commend, uh, this, this board on its, uh, original vote on this matter. Um, so I, you know, I'm, to share my feelings would be to share what you've just heard from the majority of the people who spoke tonight. So I just wanted to be one more person on the record, uh, letting you know that, um, that it was the rural, uh, character of this area that brought me here. Um, it's things like, um, you know, sw- uh, switching to telework and having hybrid capabilities and things like that that allowed us to actually find a rural area that we could move to and, uh, and still have a, uh, you know, a job where we'd have to commute long distances all the time. Uh, and so when we found the tract of land that we found, uh, we, you know, we're amazed. Uh, it's beautiful. It's right there on the North Anna. It's very, very close to the, the, uh, the area in question. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I, I hope and I think that the, the, the county government, um, will, you know, values that character of Caroline, that aspect and, and, and understands, which I think you do, um, the, the value of it. So I just wanted to be one more person on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rawls, and we do appreciate you not being repetitious.
Hello, my name is Melissa Vaughn, Reedy Church District. I own property, um, well, next to both or ne- next to one of the data centers that's, and that's proposed, um, near ninety-five and then near the one, um, that with this, in this new growth area. And my comment, uh, I'll be very succinct, is that we have, um, you all have made a pert area and that's where technology has been designated to go. And that's where you've planned it to go and that's where it should go. And I'm opposed to developing any growth outside of the existing growth area in the comp plan. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Mary Hodge, Bowling Green District. I feel like a lot of this is like which came first, the chicken or the egg, but I, I think I know which one it is. Um, and I was grateful at the last meeting that it, it sounded like we have options and that what prompted this, um, this town hall meeting, either you can, um, either just let this die, make the decision, not advance it any further and rather than drag everybody out here to another public hearing. Hopefully that'll be the case. Um, and I know we're talking just about, um, the western expansion of the pert. Now, when we were at that meeting, we already, we, you all approved, the board approved, um, this Carmel Church plan. It already does include a pert zone, probably about the same amount of acreage on the eastern side of the Carmel Church plan.
Um, nobody's talking about putting a data center there, but it is now, we have the zoning for it. I think it may, it might be a question to ask, but is the, um, water treatment plant, the Polkac Creek in that vicinity?
Um, not familiar.
I don't know, does anybody know where Polkac Creek, is it in that pert zone or in that? Okay. Because I thought, um, I thought when I was told at one time that there's a plan to use that wastewater from our water treatment plant. That's why the data center, uh, the pert is there, that we could use the, the wastewater and like the purple line, um, for the cooling of the data center. So that would be an ideal location if you're gonna put a pert. You guys all said this, um, the western expansion, it's, it's too remote. It's like four miles from all the utilities. It's too rural, it's too historic. Um, there's battlefield, it's, and all those people, that's where they build, that's where they base their homes, that they want a rural land. Um, you know, when all the solar came around, I was blindsided by it. Oh, I'm just like these people. I found out that there's a solar application a quarter mile from my home, just by this little yellow sign in the ditch, right at the corner. If I had known that I was in a solar overlay district, I would have been at the first meeting when, that nobody was here except Chip Dix and all the solar developers, uh, fighting it. So, um, I just think you have all this, all this land in Carmel Church that should be developed. Um, maybe data centers instead of all those thousands of, ten, ten thousand homes. And plus, you just approve that of me. What?
It's out. Um, we've got the water coming from Spotsylvania and that's what you guys have been looking for. So, um, this is just, it's too far west and it's.
And it's too remote and I don't think we even should be here tonight, but I implore you to please not, uh, rezone all that pert. And I did like what the gentleman said about the, um, uh, the power line. The power lines run through it. If you look on that conceptual image that the, um, tract people showed you, it had probably fifty buildings. I don't know how many million a square feet. I don't know how much power that that would consume, but I'm sure it's a lot more than that transmission line is, is, um, giving them. All right, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rawls.
Oh, Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Your turn.
Um, is there any, I don't think there is, but is there any high-powered electric lines running near the Polkac Creek?
There is.
Wastewater treatment?
Yes.
Yes, there's a two-third of K B on that runs through that area.
Near Polkac Creek, the wastewater. Okay, and it's Polkac Creek, it, isn't it a little off? Or is it still within the?
The creek, there's an area of the creek that runs in the pert area.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Jennifer Rawls and I'm in the Reedy Church District. Um, my husband and I relocated here from Richmond and.
Would you pull the mic back? Thank you.
There, sorry. Um, my husband and I relocated here from Richmond. Uh, we found a beautiful, uh, five acres of land on the North Anna River and it's absolutely beautiful. And as he said earlier, we moved out here for the rural atmosphere and the beauty of this county and the beauty of that river. And that has just been a life-changing thing for us. Um, coming from the city of Richmond, um, I actually switched schools to work here. I work at Caroline High School now. I teach it in the county and I've really, really enjoyed living here and I really, really like the rural, um, atmosphere. And I just wanna go on record saying that I would like, uh, that rural atmosphere to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rawls. At Reedy Church. Anyone else would like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Robert Carlson, I'm in the Matapanai District. I've lived in Caroline pretty much all my life. And, uh, I just wanna go on record as telling you not to change your plan you already have. Uh, the development, I'm, I'm not that far from Carmel Church. And I've already seen, um, results of what I think with digging deep wells, uh, and the water at my house. Uh, I've had to go back to a shallow well because of the iron in my way. And I believe that was, happened after they dug the deep wells. So you have a plan and I think you should just stay with that plan until that's used up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Anyone else would like to speak? Anyone else who would like to speak? Final call, anyone else who would like to speak? All right, thank you. Commissioners, we have, uh, an option. And what I would recommend is that we ask staff to advertise a public hearing, put this matter back on the agenda, and that we do another vote. Send it back to the Board of Supervisors with a definitive decision, just as we did before, and let the matter rest with them. They wanted us to reconsider. I think we should oblige them and reconsider it. And again, make our definitive decision. We'll see what the outcome is and let the matter rest with the board.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, place this agenda on the next meeting, um, um, for consideration.
Second.
For public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Young to advertise a public hearing. Have this matter placed back on the agenda. It has been seconded by Mr. Minor. All, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a, can we make that motion tonight or does that motion have to be at one of our official meetings? We can make that motion tonight, okay? Just wanted to make sure since this is a work session.
Right. And, and so all this, this is just for clarity, but your, the motion is to direct staff to put a public hearing on this amendment on the agenda, on your next agenda. And then you'll conduct a public hearing as you would for any other proposed amendment per state statute, um, at that meeting. And then you'll be in a position to be able to make a recommendation, approval or denial on the comp plan amendment.
And, but our next meeting is next week.
You couldn't do it at that meeting.
Yeah, I didn't think so. It has to have the time. Yeah.
Right. So I think, I think staff's looking at the calendar, but they'll get it on the next agenda for you that complies with the notice.
So we're probably talking about March.
April. Yeah.
The month of twenty-eighth.
March.
That's what staff would say.
End of March.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, so that you do understand, the Planning Commission is going to be holding a public hearing on March the twenty-eighth.
The motion on the floor. Just have the motion in a second. You haven't had a vote.
I'm sorry, yes, we still have the motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Planning Commission, I do wanna thank each and every one of you for being here, regardless of what side of the fence that you're. Uh, we will take this matter up at our March meeting and we will vote on it and make a recommendation back to the Board of Supervisors. So again, thank you for your participation and cooperation. Members of the Commission, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close out this, uh, work session meeting.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by, I'm sorry. Mr. Weaver. All right. Any discussion, there being no discussion? All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. This meeting is closed.